Okay, so we've been talking about salvation, the topic of salvation. I've really enjoyed it. I think it has enabled me to study this topic from an angle that I hadn't seen, you know, hadn't studied it before. And I'm getting new revelations and I am, I am getting to value my salvation more than ever before. Salvation is one of those topics that is quite easy to take for granted. It is so easy to think, I know what salvation is, you know, yes, yes, God born again. But actually, it is what the whole New Testament is about, the whole New Testament is about salvation. And the Old Testament prophets, they prophesied about salvation. As we saw in First Peter, chapter 1, that the prophets, they were searching diligently, wanting to know about the things that they were prophesying about. And they were prophesying about salvation, they were prophesying about the coming of the Messiah and the grace, the glories that would follow. So, but we are so fortunate to be living, to be alive in the time when God, you know, pouring out his grace in abundance. And what we want to do is unpack this whole thing called salvation. We saw that it is like a parcel, a package that God has handed to us. But for many of us, we haven't really opened it, you know, we've just really seen the, the outside of the package, we haven't really delved deep. We want to delve deeper so we can discover all the riches that we may be blessed by. So far, we've seen that salvation has, there are many facets to salvation. You know, we've seen that there is justification, that there is reconciliation, there is redemption, there is adoption, we haven't talked about all of those, we really just started with justification. We saw that justification is a legal concept. It's a process by which God declares, not that he declares us not guilty, not that he declares us not guilty, in fact, we have been declared guilty, it's just that he has taken our punishment and placed it upon Jesus. Someone else has paid the price, that's why we're walking free. It's not because we haven't been tried and found guilty, it's so important. You know, because if we haven't been tried and just been acquitted, we've just been, you know, there's no case to answer, which is what happens in the legal system. You know, a case collapses for lack of evidence and then, and, and what do they call it? The accused walks away from the court free, wearing white, celebrating because the case has collapsed. But it doesn't mean that he was found not guilty, it's very different. When you're found not guilty means that they've actually sat down, looked at every piece of evidence available and they said, no, this is a holy man, this is an innocent man, not holy, but innocent. But that's not what happened with us. God looked at us and he thought, guilty, you are guilty. And we were just waiting for punishment. The whole world is guilty before God and awaiting judgment. But God decided he didn't want us to die. He said, for God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that those who believe in him should not perish, but have everlasting life. In other words, he made a provision so that the punishment that was rightfully ours should not befall us. That is what God did for us. So we were guilty, we were not, you know, cleared of wrongdoing, we were guilty. But our punishment was put on Christ. Why does it matter? It matters because he can't come with new evidence and say, you know what, let's go back to court. If a person is cleared because there was no, or acquitted because there was no evidence to support the, the claims or the, or the accusations against them. If new evidence emerges, the trial will be reopened. This same person that celebrated victoriously will go back into jail. But our case is different. We've already been tried and set free on the basis that the punishment has already been meted out to Christ. Christ has born our griefs already. That's why we are free. So there is no retrial, there's not going to be a retrial. It's not possible that new evidence emerges against us, no. That's why the Bible says that, who will lay a charge against us? Yeah, it's God that justifies, it's God that justifies. Our justification is so secure because the punishment has already been served. It's already been served. We are saved in Christ Jesus. Of course, later on, we will talk about the implication of being saved. The fact that we have been declared free, free from punishment, does that mean we can just go out there and send to our hearts content? We will be tackling that particular issue and then be looking at the concept of one saved, always saved. Yeah, so our situation is so much better, it's so much better, it's so much better. But should we abuse it? No, we will not abuse it. Instead, what we will see is that if you've been set free and if you, if you love your salvation, if you love your salvation so much, then give yourself to Christ. Put your heart into the service of Jesus. That's what, that's what, you know, our Christianity is all about. You, you discover that you've been set free, you discover that you don't have to serve the punishment that was rightfully yours. You know what, you discover that and then you are filled with gratitude. You remember the story of the woman who came with an alabasca flask of ointment? And, you know, she wept and, you know, washed Jesus's feet with her tears, wiped his feet with her hair and then anointed his feet with ointment, expensive ointment, you know, probably be the equivalent of some of the very expensive perfumes we have today, but it still doesn't cut it because our perfumes, the most expensive perfume, will, will it be more than a thousand pounds? Would it be more than 10,000 pounds? This was, they said it was like a year's wages or something like that, that is how expensive this thing was. This lady anointed Jesus's feet with it. Then Jesus explained, she's doing it out of gratitude. She had many sins and she'd been forgiven and she's doing it out of gratitude. That's what God wants us to do. He wants us to serve him out of gratitude, out of what he, you know, the realization of the magnitude of what he has done for us. We serve him with all our heart. So we'll come to that later. Now we're just gradually unpacking this whole thing called salvation. We saw that Jesus could have died in so many ways. They had tried, they tried to kill him by stoning, by pushing him off a cliff, all sorts. But none of the assassination attempts was successful because, you know what? They would not have been the, the foreordained method of death. Jesus came to the earth as the lamb of God who takes away the sins of the earth. And that lamb had to be killed in a particular manner. God gave strict instructions to the Israelites before the Passover, and we may have time for that specifically in one of the sessions. But God gave specific instructions, how they were to select the lamb on the 10th day, then kill it on the 14th day and eat the meat, make sure they didn't leave anything behind, burn whatever was left behind, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There was a prescribed death for that lamb. Only then, only then, did the blood of that lamb provide security. Therefore, Jesus could not have died any other death. He had to die the prescribed death as unto the pass of a lamb that was, as the pass of a lamb that was slain for us. Therefore, when they tried to kill him so many ways, none of those worked. The Bible says in Luke, chapter 4, he was in Nazareth and they pushed him to the brow of the hill, ready to just, you know, send him to his death. But the Bible says, he walked through their midst and left. He didn't really run, he walked. So when the time came, do you know what he said? He said, I laid down my life and I take it back. This is the commandment I've received from my father. He laid down his life for us. If they had caught him in some corner and just stoned him to death, that would not have been the atonement for your sins and for my sins. He laid it down, that's why it was even more painful. Because if they just grab you in one corner and stone you quickly, you know, death comes very, very quickly. But that's not what happened. They tried him in court. They brought him before the chief priest. First, they brought, took him to Anas, the, the, the father-in-law of, of Caiphas, who was the chief priest at that time, because they used to take turns, you know, it was a yearly thing or something like that. So Caiphas was the high priest at that time, but he went first to Anas, maybe out of respect because he was sort of a senior. Then once, Jesus, Jesus didn't really cooperate with Anas. They came to Caiphas. Caiphas asked one question, he said, are you the Messiah, the Christ, the son of the blessed? He said, I am. And he said, in all his robe, he said, what more evidence do we need? He had said it all, this is enough to kill him. But because the, the death of the Messiah had been predicted, the manner that it was supposed to happen, they could not kill him themselves, even, even if they wanted to. They took him to Pilate. Pilate sent him to Herod. Jesus did not speak a word when he was with Herod. Then he was brought back to Pilate. Eventually, he was quashed and he was, you know, humiliated, spat on and eventually crucified. That was the death, the only form of death. And he had to die on Golgotha, which many have worked out that he would have died on the same spot, roughly, the same area where, where Abraham would have, you know, offered eyes. I don't know just how accurate that is because of your, some that say that the temple man, the very top of the temple man, that's where Man Moriah was, some that say this, but it doesn't matter. The key thing is that he was offered and he died for your sins, for my sins. It's, there is a need for us to talk about Jesus's death because this, the church of today, it talks about money more often than it talks about Jesus. It talks about money more often than it talks about Jesus. If you attack any doctrines, any teachings, wrong teachings of course, about money collecting from, in money collections from, from people, for extortion, I should say, you are attacked, you are attacked. There's one preacher in Nigeria right now, taking all the big churches to task over, over the abuse of authority and get you, and you won't believe just how much this pastor is being attacked, but everything he's saying is true about the whole issue. But you can blaspheme the name of Jesus and people won't even blink. Once heard blasphemies from pulpits, nobody flinched. But you touch on tight and offering and somebody will come for you. Something has happened to the church. We have fallen from grace, we have fallen from the heights that Jesus set for us once. Jesus's death and resurrection, that's why we've got Christianity. If we won't emphasize that, what, what do we want to preach? What do we want to talk about? It was because of his suffering, because he hung on the cross, that's why you and I have got salvation, you and I have got forgiveness of sins. How can we not talk about that? How can we focus our minds on ephemeral issues when there was something this, this potent, this important? I, I myself, I had to repent in the sense that you, you, you get to a point in Christianity where you are looking for some juicy topic, you're looking for something more exciting. But if Jesus's death and resurrection ceases to be exciting to us, we're in trouble. Because God waited 4,000 years for that thing to happen and it was the single most important event that he was waiting for. And for us to set it aside because we've got something more interesting, what is it that we've got that is so interesting? Paul said, when I came to you, right into the Corinthians, he said, I did not come in the wisdom of speech, I didn't come to showcase the wisdom of this world. I sought to know nothing amongst you but Christ and him crucified. That's all he was interested in, Jesus and him crucified. He wanted to see the effect of the crucifixion of Jesus in the lives of the Corinthians, that's all he was interested in. And if we stop emphasizing the death, resurrection of Jesus, the crucifixion of Jesus, we have read the church of its most important, or its potent power. There is power in the name of Jesus. They demonstrate at the name of Jesus. We need to lift him up, we need to talk about him, we need to exalt him, because that's where the power lies. So I've, I've had to repent, I have had to, you know, come back to earth and say, these foundations, they are crucial and we need to keep talking about, if it was good enough for Paul, it should be good enough for you and me. So we learnt that there were assassination attempts on Jesus, but you know what? None of them would have fulfilled prophecy, therefore, they were not allowed to happen. And then Jesus finally was tried and then he was crucified. As the time approached, he was preparing for his own death. The Bible says that as the time approached, he set his face to go to Jerusalem steadfastly, steadfastly, you know, knowing that no prophet would die anywhere else other than in Jerusalem. He was going there knowing that is where they were going to kill him. That's why they were going to kill him. And he stayed away from Judea. If you read John's Gospel, it stays very clearly, he stayed away from Judea because they wanted to kill him. In John, chapter 7, at the feast of Tabernacles, Jesus's brothers came to him and said that no one that wants to be known goes into hiding. If you want people to know your ministry, why are you hiding here in, in Galilee? Because Jesus wasn't, was hiding away in Galilee. Why? Because if he went to, they would want to kill him ahead of his time and he was a lamb of God who takes away the sins. So he wasn't supposed to just be stoned by a bunch of, you know, an angry mob. So he refused to go there. The Bible says that after his brothers had gone to the feast, then he also went, albeit secretly. Then once he arrived, whilst they were just wondering, will he come here or not? Will he not come? Will he come? Go read John, chapter 7, very interesting. Suddenly, Jesus walked up, you know, to the open on the last day of the feast and then started telling them, you are thirsty, come to me. And he said, oh, that's the guy. So Jesus was, he had to be cautious, he was treading cautiously, not because he was afraid of them or afraid of death. As I told you, Luke, chapter 4, he walked out of them, you know, the mob, they couldn't do anything to him. But he had to, he had to tread cautiously because these guys wanted to try and violate the word of God. They wanted to kill him ahead of the, of the, of the prescribed time. So he avoided Judea, but when the time came, he set his face steadfastly towards Jerusalem. And there he was crucified. He predicted his own death, he said, let these words sink into your ears, for the son of man is about to be betrayed into the hands of men. Not just that he was going to be killed, he also knew that he was going to be betrayed. But they did not understand this saying and it was hidden from them so that they did not perceive it. And they were afraid to ask him about this saying. He predicted his betrayal, he knew exactly who would betray him. When evening had come, he sat down with the twelve. Now, as they were eating, he said, assuredly I say unto you, one of you will betray me. And they were exceedingly sorrowful and each of them began to say to him, Lord, is it I? He answered and said, he who dipped his hand with me in the dish will betray me. The son of man indeed goes just as a lesson of him, but war to the man by whom the son of man is betrayed. It would have been good for that man if it hadn't been, if he hadn't been born. Matthew 26, 20, 24. Let me clarify something. If the son of man, if it had already been appointed, he had already been appointed to die on the cross, can anybody be held accountable for his death? You know what else Caiphas doing? He was only fulfilling prophecy. All the people that spat on him, they were only fulfilling prophecy. You see, there is the will of God, then there is the will of man. God predicts what's going to happen, that's called prophecy. He doesn't force people to fulfill his word, he predicts what's going to happen. I think it was Peter that wrote, it's anybody that will, will live good, um, righteously or godly life will suffer persecution right from the beginning. Anybody who stood for God, stood for God, right from Abel, right from Abel. Everyone who stood for God suffered persecution and many of them were killed. That's just how it works. So it was obvious that when Jesus came shining, the devil was going to go and whisper into some people's ears to come and kill him. Does that make those people not guilty? Why didn't the devil get John and James to kill Jesus? Because it wasn't possible. Why didn't he get Peter? Peter denied him three times, but to kill him, he wouldn't have done it. You see, the devil, the Bible says that he is a roaring lion, he goes about seeking whom he may devour. In other words, he doesn't, he's not at liberty to just devour anybody. He must choose who he's going to, just ask a lion or a leopard or a jeezy, they look at the head of all the beasts, they see a young one there that's not running properly and they say, that's the one I'm going for. There are big ones there with proper flesh, but they can also run very fast and they can fight as well if need be. So they go for the one that's not going to fight, the one that's not going to put up a fight and they target that one and they go for it. Bible says, he goes about like a roaring lion, the devil seeking. In other words, he searches. He doesn't just select anybody that he finds because he doesn't want to fight. He seeks whom he may devour. So he found Judas, a man who right from the beginning, the Bible says, he was dipping his hand into the, into the treasury, he was stealing, he was not sincere, he was fake. And he was the one that he would, he found. So Judas was culpable and so were all the people, you know? Jesus told Pilate about it. He said that, you would not have any power unless it were given to you. Therefore, the man who handed me to you has the greatest sin. All those people who beat Jesus, spat at him, they were culpable. But you know what? If they all turned around and said, Lord, we are sorry, forgive us, their sins would be wiped away, their sins would be wiped away. Judas offered to betray Jesus. Then one of the twelve called Judas Iscariot went to the chief priest and said, what are you willing to give me if I deliver him to you? See now, it wasn't the chief priest that went to him, he went to the chief priest. And they counted out to him thirty pieces of silver, fulfilling prophecy in Zechariah. So from that time, he sought opportunity to betray him. Can you imagine? We just talked about how the devil seeks whom he may devour. Oh, so Judas doing, seeking an opportunity. So he took the money and then he was just thinking, what am I, what am I going to do? Can you imagine? When Jesus said these things, he was troubled in spirit and testified and said, most assuredly I say to you, one of you will betray me. Then the disciples looked at one another perplexed about whom he spoke. Now there was leaning on Jesus's bosom, one of his disciples, whom Jesus loved. Simon Peter therefore motions to him to ask who it was of whom he spoke. Then leaning back on Jesus's breast, he said to him, Lord, who is it? Jesus answered, it is he to whom I shall give a piece of bread when I have dipped it. And having dipped the bread, he gave it to Judas Iscariot, the son of Simon. Now, after the piece of bread, Satan entered him. Then Jesus said to him, what you do, do quickly. John, chapter 13, verses 14 to 27, and the previous passage was Matthew 26, 14 to 15. So you can see here, the level of control that Judas had over this whole issue. He went, he, he, he asked for payment, he took it, he sought opportunities, he came and sat at the, at the, at the last supper, they were discussing, who will it be? At this time, he should have said, oh, our game is up, Lord, I'm sorry, it was me, I'm really, really ashamed of this, but it was me. No, instead, he went from that supper. On the past, I used to wonder that, you know, but, but he cried afterwards and he, you know, he wept bitterly and things were clearly, he, he had repented. No. You see, repentance is a thing of the heart. That's what the Bible says, rain to your heart, not your garments. In other words, don't do drama before me, I want to see true repentance is in your heart. You know, in the Old Testament, in Ahab, one of the most wicked kings to have ever lived, this man who, who led the whole nation to idolatry. There was a time when God pronounced judgment upon him and Ahab cried and humbled himself and God said, because this man has humbled himself, therefore, the judgment I pronounce will not happen in his life. This wicked man, God spared him because he humbled himself. So I know that if Judas had truly repented, he too would have been saved. The problem with that is that we are moved by tears too much. You know, somebody says, oh, yeah, then we do, oh, see how he's sorry he is. There are many, many, many psychopaths that play this game. They will cry, they will weep and then their next victim is on the way. When Jesus had spoken these words, he went out with his disciples over the brook, Kedron, where there was a garden which he and his disciples entered. And Judas who betrayed him also knew the place for Judas, but Jesus often met there with his disciples. The Judas haven't received a detachment of troops, can you imagine? He came to his master with a detachment of troops. He worked with Jesus for three and a half years or whatever, however long he worked with him, saw just how much the Pharisees and the religious class hated him. And he defected to that camp to go and bring soldiers to come and arrest him. You see, if it was a case of he went and took some money, he just a man that loved money, or he went and took some money and then was some corner somewhere, he didn't, no, he led them. And then when he arrived, he betrayed him with a kiss. And whilst he was still speaking, behold a multitude. And he who was called Judas, one of the twelve, went before them and near to Jesus to kiss him. But Jesus said to him, Judas, are you betraying the son of man with a kiss? When there's around him saw what was going to happen, they said to him, Lord, shall we strike with a sword? And one of them struck the servant of the high priest and cut off his right ear. But Jesus answered and said, permit even this. He touched his ear and healed him. Then Jesus said to the chief priests, captains of the temple, and the elders who had come to him, have you come out against Eroba with swords and clubs? When I was with you daily in the temple, you did not try to seize me, but this is so our, and the power of darkness. Luke 24, 47 to 53. So here you see Jesus in full control over the situation. He was so close to his death, but he was in control. Jesus was sent to Anas. The Dutch troops and the captain and the officers of the Jews arrested Jesus and bound him. And they led him away to Anas first, for he was the father-in-law of Caiphas, who was high priest that year. Now it was Caiphas who advised the Jews that it was expedient that one man should die for the people. John 18, 12 to 14. And they led Jesus away to the high priest and with him were assembled all the chief priests, the elders and the scribes. But Peter followed him at a distance, right into the courtyard of the high priest and he sat with the servants and warmed himself at the fire. Now the chief priest and the council sought testimony against Jesus to put him to death, but found none, for many bore false witness against him, but their testimonies did not agree. Mark 14, 53 to 54. All of this needed to happen because you see, in the Old Testament, the lamb that was slain was without blemish, it was spotless. In fact, in the case of the, the day of the atonement, and we will talk about that, the chief priest would come and search that animal diligently. And in, in, in the Passover, each household, the head of the household was supposed to do this, select a, an lamb without blemish. Why did it matter to God so much to emphasize the point, the, the, the lack of any blemish on the lamb? Simple, that blemish refers to sin. And he wanted us to understand that the lamb of God, whose, whose blood was worthy enough to redeem Was worthy enough to redeem all of mankind, it had to be spotless, it had to be without sin. Therefore, it was necessary, before Jesus's death, he stood before his accusers and he said, how many of you convict me of sin? Silence. Can you imagine what a powerful testimony? To be able to stand, imagine you lived all your life publicly and you're able to say, so how many of you can convict me? Said, nobody had anything to say. That's the lamb. The spotless lamb without blemish, that was, that was Jesus right there. And this trial, it was essential he happened because it's the equivalent, it was the equivalent of the high priest examining. The lamb to see if there was any fault in it. And the Bible says they couldn't find anything, so when they couldn't find anything, they started invented thing, renting things. They brought in some scoundrels who said, yes, we had him, uh, 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 Cass and God, we had them doing this, we had it doing that. They knew it was a lie, the Bible says, but their testimonies could not agree. So this man would say one thing, the other one would say something contradictory. They were looking for something. You see, had they not found something, they could not, they could not kill Jesus via a judicial process. Once you have a judicial process, you have to have accusations, then you have to move those accusations. This is what was happening. So it's important that we remember these things because then the Old Testament makes sense. When you read a, a book of Exodus, the whole of chapter fourteen, fifteen, thirteen, and you, you see all those elaborate descriptions of the Passover. You understand, it was a foreshadow of something. God was foretelling something that was going to happen in the future. And he gave his people, the Jews, these ordinances. So when the real thing happened, they could say, oh my God. This is what Moses wrote about. You know, when Peter preached his first sermon. On the day of Pentecost, what happened? Three thousand people, it's got saved. And the Bible says that those three thousand. The Bible says that those three thousand, those three thousand. They got saved, they were cut to the heart. In other words, they were convicted. The word that hit them was so strong. It was like they were in a hurry, in a hurry to seek forgiveness from God. But why were they in such a hurry? Why were they in such a hurry? They said, men and brethren, what shall we do? What shall we do? Because you know what Peter said? He said, you killed the Messiah. It was prophesied that he would be the lamb slain at Passover for us, for, for, for our sins. But this was supposed to be through the hands of wicked men. And yet we did it. What does that mean? It means we are the wicked people. They knew they were in big trouble. They screamed, men and brethren, what shall we do? And Peter, you know, told them to repent, be baptized and be saved, and they would receive the same gift of the Spirit. So. These things, we are talking about are so important. There is power in this message. It saved that three thousand. Once they saw. That the Passover whole, Passover thing had been played before their eyes. Only fifty days earlier. They knew they were in trouble. They knew they were in trouble. That's the power. We'll be going to Isaiah chapter fifty three, three very soon, and you'll see. The relevance and how I asked what I've just, I've just been. Okay. Then some rose up and bore false witness against him, saying. We heard him say, I will destroy this temple made with hands and within three days I will build another made without hands. But not even then did their, their testimonies agree. And the high priest stood up in the midst and asked Jesus, saying, do you answer nothing? What is it these men testify against you? But he kept silent and answered nothing. Again, the high priest asked him, saying to him, are you the Christ, the son of the blizzard? Jesus said, I am. And you will see the son of man sitting at the right hand of the power and coming with the clouds of heaven. Then the high priest tore his clothes and said, what further need do we have of any witnesses? You have heard the blasphemy, what do you think? And they all condemned him to be deserving of death, Mark fourteen, fifty five to sixty five. You see what's happening here? The high priest was looking for something, something. Because they needed to, you know, find Jesus guilty and then pronounce death upon him. And if you like, Jesus gave them this, you know, he'd been quiet. He'd been quiet. And he could have just stayed quiet, but they needed something in order to crucify him, in order to slay that, that lamb. Who are torn for our sins. Jesus was sent over to punctious Pilate. Now, when Herod saw Jesus was, um, exceeding, and sorry, Jesus was sent to punctious Pilate, but when Pilate realized that Jesus was from Galilee. He sent him over to Herod. Now Herod, when he saw the G, uh, when he saw Jesus, he was exceedingly glad. For he had desired for a long time to see him, because he had heard many things about him. And he hoped to see some miracle done by him. Then he questioned him with many words, but he answered him nothing. And the chief priests and scribes stood vehemently accused him. Then Herod, with his men of war, cheated him with contempt and mocked him. And raid him in a gorgeous robe and sent him back to Pilate. That very day, Pilate and Herod became friends, can you imagine, friends over the death of the Messiah? With each other, for previously they had been an enemy with each other, Luke twenty three, verses eight to twelve. Then Jesus came out, wearing the crown of thorns and the purple robe, and highly said to them, behold the man. Therefore, when the chief priests and officers saw him, they cried out, saying, crucify him, crucify him. Did you know that by this time, Jesus had already been scorched, they'd been, he'd been, you know, beaten? He was bloodied. They, 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 the, the way they used to scourge people in those days, they would, they had these leather belts. With broken glass, broke pieces of bones, things like that sticking in. And then they would use that to hip you, and the idea was that when they flip those broken glasses and things like that would pierce the flesh. And then they would pull it off, so it would be young, with some flesh. So by the time you are done, you know, you, you will not have any skin. And it is said that some people didn't used to survive just the beating, it would kill them. Of course, you would start bleeding. But when all of that had been done. Pilate brings Jesus before. The crowd and says, behold the man. Almost to say, cause you know, Pilate was looking for a way. To save Jesus. So he was almost saying, look, see how badly this guy has been beaten? Is this not enough punishment? Because he told them earlier, you know what, I will scourge him and, and then will be, uh, you know. That should be enough, and they, they said, no, crucify him. Crucify him. It's illogical, it makes no sense. What did he do? Pilate said, why should I crucify him? What has he done? They said, we have a law, and according to our law, he ought to die. Because he made himself. The son of God. Therefore, when Pilate heard that saying, he was the more afraid. And went against the preterium and said to Jesus, where are you from? Jesus gave him no answer. You know, Jesus had been talking to him, when he saw Pilate was looking for an opportunity to free him. He stopped answering Pilate's questions. Pilate said to him, are you not speaking to me? Do you not know that I have the power? To crucify you and the power to release you. That's when Jesus told him, you wouldn't have had any power unless it were given to you. He said, you could have no power at all against me unless it had been given you from above. Therefore, the one who delivered me to you has the greater sin. From then on, Pilate sought to release him, but the Jews cried out, saying, if you let this man go, you are not Caesar's friend. Look at the manipulation. Whoever makes himself a king speaks against Caesar. When Pilate therefore heard that saying, he brought Jesus out and sat down in the judgment seat in the place that is called the pavement, but in the Hebrew, Gabatha. Now it was the preparation day of the Sabbath, of the Passover, sorry, and about the sixth hour, and he said to the Jews, behold your king. See, the guy was struggling. First he said, behold the man, now he said, behold your king. He was stalling, he was looking for a way not to kill him. But they cried out, away with him. Crucify him. Pilate said to them, shall I crucify your king? The chief priest answered, we have no king but Caesar. See, these guys, they used to hate Caesar, they hated the Romans. Look at them saying that they have no king but Caesar, they're suddenly in allegiance to Caesar. Then he delivered him to them to be crucified. Then he took Jesus and led him away, John six, verses fifteen, verses five to. From verse five to verse sixteen. So I've taken you through this whole thing, just to, just once more. Drum it into us. Not to be ashamed of the cross. Not to be ashamed of the preaching of the cross. Not to be ashamed of the preaching about Jesus's death and resurrection, there is power in it. It is the one thing that God waited for so long. It is the one thing that the prophets of old prophesied about. Everybody was prophesying about it, hoping that they would be beneficiaries, that they would witness it. You and I are beneficiaries. Let's not despise. The crucifixion, let's not despise the message of the crucifixion, let it be in our mouth, let us talk about it boldly. And I'm saying this to you, I'm saying it to myself. For there's power in it. We will come back to this aspect of Jesus's trial with Barabas and, you know. What went on there when we're talking about the atonement. Okay. Now that we're going to be, you know, obviously. We didn't start early. So, um. Okay, you're all there. Now we're going to look at Old Testament prophecies, talking about the death of Jesus. We want to magnify this topic. Now, Isaiah, the prophet Isaiah is quite unique in the Bible. Because of all the prophets, it's probably the one that prophesied about the Messiah the most. I mean, you could say David in the Psalms also, you know. Gives some very potent prophecies about Messiah, but Isaiah's own is unique. Because Isaiah prophesied about the forerunner of the Messiah, John the Baptist. And we, we read about it in Isaiah chapter forty, verse three to four, that the voice of him that crieth in the wilderness. Prepare ye the way of the Lord, make straight in the desert a highway for our God. Every valley shall be exalted, and every mountain and hill shall be made whole, low, sorry. And the crooked shall be made straight, and the rough places plain. Isaiah forty, verses three and four. Isaiah foresaw. The ministry of John the Baptist. He foresaw that the Messiah, before he arrived, would have someone go before him to prepare the way. And Isaiah also saw that this, even though he prophesied about it. To make it look like just somebody. A, a herald, stand, you know, walking maybe a few feet. From. The person that they are announcing. And the Ben, you know, so as soon as they've said it, a few, you know, seconds later, the person himself comes. If you were reading the Old Testament, that's, you know, that's what you'd have thought, maybe that's what Isaiah himself would have thought. He didn't realize that, how it would happen. But this is, so that, that, that's, that's one of the things about prophecy that I, I, I realized. And I've got an image here that, that will help you, uh, maybe will help us to understand prophecy a little bit more, that this prophecy time perspective. You see, when you are going for a walk and you see a building in the distance, you know, maybe like. Maybe it's an old fort or castle or something on a hill somewhere in the distance. You don't see the features, all you see is something gray in the distance, you know? So I've, I've depicted it here, you know, so it's built it. This is the, but. By distance, maybe all you are seeing is like maybe a square or something like that, you're not getting all the intricate features of the building because it's so far away. But as you get closer, the features become, become manifest. That's how prophecy works. You see, so it, God gave, God gave the prophets visions. Primarily, that's how he spoke to them. He gave them a word in their hearts. But he also gave them visions. In Jeremiah chapter one, God begins with the vision of a port. And the pot is going, you know, this, it's steaming. And the steam is being blown in the north, towards the north, that, you know, the. The, that direction. And then God says, Isaiah, what, Jeremiah, what do you see? Jeremiah says, I see a pot and it's, the, the, the steam is sort of hidden north. And then he said, yes, you've seen correctly, then the Lord gives him the interpretation. So the law, the law showed prophets of old scenes, vision. And then he would give them a word about what they had seen, and then they would prophesy. So Isaiah saw things and he said it the way he saw someone that was going ahead, a, a, about proclaiming. The arrival of the Messiah. And that's what John the Baptist was doing. He was in the wilderness screaming, repent to the kingdom of God, it's at hand, and people descended from all over. To the wilderness to listen to him. Isaiah saw that. Or he foresaw that. Isaiah also prophesied about Jesus's ancestry. He said, a shoot will come up. From the stump of Jesse. Jesse was David's father. From his roots, a branch will bear fruit. The spirit of the Lord will rest on him, the spirit of wisdom and understanding, the spirit of the, of counsel and of power, the spirit of knowledge. Isaiah eleven, one to two. So here, Isaiah tells you. That according to the flesh, the Messiah would come from the root of Jesse, in other words, from. The line of David. He says, from its his roots, a branch will bear fruit. To show you that it would be an offspring. And the fact that he would bear fruit means that, you know, he, he, he won't be there alone, he, because of him, because of his ministry. Many will receive salvation, which is, that's referring to you and me, we are the fruit. He prophesied about the virgin birth of the Messiah. That's found in Isaiah chapter seven, verse fourteen, therefore the Lord himself shall give you a sign. Behold, a virgin shall conceive and bear a son and shall call his name Emmanuel. Isaiah seven, fourteen. He foresaw Jesus's ministry. In Isaiah, um, uh, chapter sixty one, verses one to three, he says, the spirit of the Lord God is upon me. Because the Lord has anointed me to preach good tidings unto the meek. He had sent me to bind up the broken-hearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives, and the opening of the prison to them that are bound. To proclaim the acceptable year of the Lord and the day of vengeance of God. To comfort all that mourn, to appoint unto them that morning Zion. To give them the beauty for ashes, the oil of joy for mourning, the garment of praise for, spirit of happiness. That they might be called the trees of righteousness, the planting of the Lord, that he may, might be glorified. That's Isaiah sixty one, one to three. You know, Jesus quoted this passage in the verses one and two, the spirit of the Lord God is upon me. He quoted it when he was in his own town of Nazareth. It was after this particular, this quotation and the commentary that he gave. That they decided to, to stone him. I mean, not to stone him, sorry, they decided to push him, um, over the grave. Isaiah prophesied about the life of the Messiah, his suffering, his death, the victory in death. He also prophesied about the life after the, um, the resurrection, Isaiah fifty two and fifty three. And I feel like, um. I, I need to ask you at this point, how much longer you can go, whether I should wrap up here or whether you want to go a little longer. So let me pause here and ask that question. What do you guys think? Should I pause here and round up?
Yeah, I, I, I'm enjoying it. I think, um. There's so much, I mean personally, I think there's so much that has been pulled for now. And it would be best if we absorb it in. A little chunk so that we, we don't just run through it because there is so much we are relearning. I mean, that is my personal opinion, that if we do it in a small chunk, then we can understand it better than. That if we do it in a small chunks, then we can understand it better than, you know, if pouring everything on us at that now. So for me, this is enough for today, I believe. Thank you.
Okay, okay. No, that's, that's, that, I got that, that sense. Does everyone agree? Or does, you know, if anybody has a different opinion, please feel free.
I agree.
Okay, good. Okay, so, um, I will round up then. And I agree, I think I, I, I got that sense that I was rushing a little bit through it because of time. Um, but there is so much to learn from this, so I agree. Um, well, I'll come back to it next time and, you know, and nail it better. Okay, so let's quickly do a roundup. We've seen that the message of the cross is extremely important and it's not something to be ignored. If you look, if you examine the Gospels of Jesus, you'll discover that his death, resurrection and ascension picks up almost half of some of the Gospels. That's, that's how important, you know, you look at John's Gospel. From chapter thirteen onwards, all the way to chapter twenty-one. You have preparation unto death and then his death, resurrection and ascension. So it's very, very important. It's the culmination of everything. You know, the Bible is almost silent in Jesus's early years. You know, thirty years and there are only about a couple of verses talking about the, those thirty years. But the last two weeks of Jesus's life is like half of the gospel. Because that's the key bit. And there's a need for us to pay particular attention to it, because if we, if we, if we ignore it, I mean, we do that at our own peril. The devil is quite happy for us to ignore eh, th- this message in search of some, something more exciting. This is fundamental and it is crucial. We need to, we need to come back to it, relearn it. We like, like we just mentioned, you know, relearn, relearn stuff, because that's what I'm doing, relearning. Reappreciating it, revaluing it. Good. So I'll pause here. And if anybody wants to share anything with us that they've learned, or if they've got questions that they wanna ask, um, please feel free. We're only five of us, so, so there's nowhere to hide. So I know you joined later, but, um, I hope you, 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 you managed to get something.
Yes, but I'm actually looking forward to going back to, to listen in. Um, I missed, um, you know, the part where you, I mean, I joined in at the time, but I was a little distracted, uh, uh, when you were trying to explain, um, you know, the fact that Jesus's death had to happen, but, um, um, whether or not, you know, explaining that we had, we have free will. And indeed, the, the people that it had to happen to didn't have to be those people. That, that section I, I sort of missed. So I'd love to go back to the whole thing so that I can, I can get an understanding of all of it.
Okay, good, good. Okay, um, I'll come to you, Bishop. Anything to, to share today?
Yes, just a little I want to add. Um, we, we, we are getting to an era and we are getting more understanding that our salvation is not outwardly, so you can't measure with any instrument. Eh, it's more, has, has to do with your heart and inwardly. So we, we can't just point or pinpoint someone and say, okay, this guy is a Christian. What, what do you, what instrument are you using to measure to know he's a Christian or not? So it's, it's coming clearer to us that salvation is personal. It's personal and it's your personal relationship with God. So we, we, we can't just see, we can't just look at someone and say, oh, he's a Christian. No, you can't be sure of that.
Mm-hmm.
It has to do with the heart.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we have to careful how we judge people. We look at people and say, we point and say, oh, this guy is a Christian, this guy is not. This guy is a strong, you know, Christian. This guy, no, we have to stop that. Because we, we don't have any instruments we can measure and know the state of the person. It's only God who knows who and how we are in our relationship with him.
Mm-hmm.
We, it's, 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 it's dicey, but people will understand when we are done with this message.
Mm-hmm. Okay, amen. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, so, um, one of the things that Jesus said, um, and I think he taught a parable around it, you know, um, the parable of the wheat and the tares, that, you know, an enemy went and sued the tares among the wheat. And the servants asked, should we pluck them out? And he said, no, no, you, you, you will not be able to tell which is which. Um, but in trying to get rid of some of the wheat, of, of the, of the weeds or the tares, you might end up also plucking out some of the wheat. So wait, at the end of the age, the en- the angels of the Lord will come and they will be able to remove everything that, that offense out of his kingdom. So, yes, we, it's not for us to, to judge people to say, you know, whether they are Christian or they're not Christian. But, uh, but that seemed, but at the same time also, um, you, if when you read the New Testament, we see that, you know, when, when the disciples came across blatant falsehood, they were not afraid to, to question it as well. But you are right, when it comes to individual salvation, you know, it is a matter between, you know, somebody and God. Good. And finally, Reverend, anything to share with us? Anything to add?
Oh yeah, I mean, um, I've really enjoyed it. Thank you for putting in such work I can imagine. And I do add to what Bishop said and you saw. Yes, as much as we can measure one salvation, the fruit will be evident.
Yeah.
The fruits will be evident. And to add to what you also said, if we also see falsehood, it is the fruit they are bearing. As much as we bear with one another, we should be bold enough to also help correct ourselves in brotherly love. Because at the end of the day, when it is all said and done, we all want to get home.
Yeah.
So we help one another, as the Bible says in Galatians, let's bear with one another in love. So that together, iron sharpened iron, we can prune ourselves, even like we do on this platform. There is so much knowledge being poured forth. If we can apply ourselves to wait and, I keep using this word, relearn, because some of us, the Christianity we embrace, we embrace it without questioning.
Mm-hmm.
This is what it is done. And then we just do it without questioning even the why. So it is a very good avenue for us to polish ourselves. So that Christ will find in us a glorious day. Thank you very much.
Amen, amen. That's very powerful. Amen. Good. So, um, finally, I'll come to you, Irene. Um, do you want to say something before we finish?
Okay. So for me, um, I think there, there was a lot to, um, or that there's a lot to be learnt. And for me, I think among your opening statements, the fact that we cannot say, we, we cannot overemphasize Jesus's death and resurrection. Because it's the foundation of Christianity, or i- i- is the foundation for our salvation.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, like you said, myself, I will repent. Because sometimes we come to, um, a point in our Christian life that we think that, oh, we are thinking about the deep things of God and we, we need messages that are like, let's say, powerful, something that I've not heard before, or something that I read in the Bible, but, um, I didn't have the revelation. And so if a man of God is able to give me insights into that, I feel like, okay, those are the kind of things that I want to hear, because those are the things that I want to, like, eh, will keep me like, spiritual, will let me grow spiritually. But the, the message of salvation is not basic. It's not, eh, 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 it cannot be like, oh, I have graduated from that level. It, it is, the whole essence of we live in a Christian life is the fact that we will be saved, we have eternal life, and we will go to be with the Lord. So i- i- if we come to a point where we think, um, maybe, um, any other thing, talk about fruits of the, eh, the spirit or, um, the gifts of the spirit or eh, or money, how God will bless us is more important than the message of salvation. We are, we are missing it. And I think the devil is happy about the state of the church now.
Mm-hmm.
Because honestly, when you go to, I can't, I can't say for every church. But if you go to most churches, you aren't going to hear anything like, maybe if it's not in their plan eh, or in their theme to talk about, um, so how, how did you hear salvation? Unless, let's say, um, they get new, new people coming to the church a lot and then they will say, maybe, oh, if you have not given your life to Christ, then lift up your hands and say, this has to me. But there is so much in that message that we, we deem as simple. There is so much, Monsieur, and as you started teaching, we are learning so much. So for me, I, 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 I have come to appreciate the sacrifice on the cross the more. Maybe, um, I knew that, yes, Jesus suffered for me, eh, but, but if you look at all the, like, the odds, all the, all the sequence of events, you realise that we must be so, our, 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 our salvation was so valuable to, to God. That he, he, he had to, he had to go through so, so much trouble, so much years had gone by. But yet, he, he found a way to bring us back. So we should never, never take it for granted. And we are in times where the, the, the world is presenting us messages that seem to be convenient. But let us not forget Jesus's sacrifice on the cross. Thank you.
Amen, amen. Amen. One of the things, like when you were saying, you were, you were talking, one of the things that came to me is, is like, I mean, the devil has been very, very tricky. I mean, he's been very, very smart with the way he has handled the church, you know? There are, you know, blossoming ministries that only encourage. That's all they do. And is encouragement a good thing? Of course it's a good thing. Paul talks about, writes about encouragement. But imagine that's all you do. The people come to church every Sunday to hear a word of encouragement. You see, all it takes to enter into error is to emphasize one truth to the exclusion of another. That's all it takes to enter into error. You serve somebody this food until that food becomes like poison. You don't want to eat it anymore. That's what's happened to the church. There are churches that are, are preaching blatant lies. But there are churches that are preaching stuff that is not bad in itself. But it's like being served dessert every single meal. It's, instead of the main meal, it's just, you go there, it's a cake, cake, morning, afternoon, evening, cake, cake. It's nice to eat a piece of cake every now and again. But if somebody makes that the main meal for every three times a day, you will start having an issue with it. And it will affect your health as well. That's what's happening to the body of Christ right now. So you hear all sorts of things and the preaching of the cross. And Jesus's death, resurrection, what the power is. I've seen, you know, crusades where Jesus was preached. And the miracles that happened, they were just incredible. It's almost like you lift up his name and things happen. You don't even have to pray for people. But instead, the devils have given us substitute. Things, substitutes, things for us to get occupied with. And we think we've got something. Today we are talking about anointing. Tomorrow we are talking about something. He's just there laughing. Because the basics, so, so Mark wrote the Gospel. And many people believe that Mark wrote the first Gospel. But Matthew read Mark and he said, ah, you know, there's some things you didn't write about, um, Mark. I was there. Sat down and he wrote his. Luke came along and said, I've got somebody called Theophilus that I need. I'm trying to disciple. I, 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 I'm discipling. And there are many gospel accounts. Here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to take all of them, study them carefully. So I can get a proper orderly account. When you read Matthew, you realise that it's an orderly account, but it's not a chronological account. As soon as Matthew has finished with Jesus's, um, baptism and all of that, he goes straight to the sermon of the mount. Three chapters. Why? Because Matthew grouped things in teams. Luke said, I'm discipling somebody. And I want, this was a clearly some Roman or, 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 or Greek official, the way he was, he addressed him, Theophilus. And those guys in those days, those educated minds, if you wanted to persuade them something, you have to give it to them in chronological manner. So Luke sat down and he wrote his Gospel. Take him bits from Matthew, take him bits from all other people to get an account that somebody could follow. Somebody that loved chronology could follow and see, ah, to his death. But when Luke hits chapter nine of his Gospel, he starts preparing for Jesus's death. From chapter nine to the end, maybe that was like maybe three weeks, maybe a month, I don't know. But his time was close. So many chapters, eighty-four chapters, and from nine to the end, Luke is literally preparing the ground. That's how important it is. That's how this topic is, that's important. That's how important this topic is. So we, we, we neglect it at our own peril. It must, it must come to the forefront of Christian preaching once more. Whereby we talk about it all the time. And if that shall happen, if that shall happen, we will see a change, transformation in the church. You would be preaching and people would just be getting saved. You don't have to do an altar call. Because Jesus has been magnified. The sacrifice that he, he, he made has been magnified. God sees it. The Holy Spirit's get to work. Just as Peter was preaching and the people stopped him. It wasn't Peter that did an altar call. No, 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 no. They stopped him. They said, men and brethren, what shall we do? We shall lift Jesus up. That's what, as we preach the word of God. God bless you all and I see you next Friday. By God's grace.